Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission as of November 1st, 2018. As always, we start with an indication. I'll ask Mr. Slay if he wouldn't mind getting that started for us this morning.
Mr. Slay. We are so thankful for this opportunity we have to come together, Father, to meet together so that we might consider the business of the county. It's an incredible privilege, Lord, the freedoms that we enjoy to conduct the business of the county together as a society, Father. We don't take that for granted. Thank you for that freedom. Father, I pray that you would give these men the wisdom they need this morning so that the decisions they make are pleasing to you. Father, I thank you for those who take good care of us. Father, we're thinking about the weather last night and how we have first responders, Lord, who are not protecting their shelter in it, Father, they're out in it. And we want to thank you for them, for the sacrifices that they and their families made. And thank you for the protection that you provide in Christ's name for them.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All right. Well, go ahead and move into our Planning Commission. I'll take motion for consideration approval of September 27th minutes. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. I'll oppose lock sign. Motion carries. Anybody need any updates on the old business on your agenda as far as Renee bringing that up to speed on y'all? Are y'all good? Everybody good on Allos?
I'm good.
All right. We'll move on then to new considerations. All right. Ms. Renee.
Just for the record, our office hasn't received any calls on any of those hearings scheduled for Monday. The first item under new business is a dimensional variance request by Jeff Sebold at 511 Turtle Lane. This property is located on the east side of Turtle Lane. It's lot 158 of Turtle Ridge subdivision phase two. That's an aerial view. He's seeking a dimensional variance of 10 feet from the 20-foot rear setback due to a proposed 17-by-11-foot addition to the existing back porch. And the existing porch is here. This will be the addition, and it will end up being 10 feet from the property line, from the rear property line. The application stated that the home is sighted so that only a small porch addition of less than three feet could be added to the home without a variance. These are the views of the porch addition. This is the rear view, and then these are the side views. Again, this is another view of that rear addition. This is what it looks like now. There is a fence along the backyard, and then these are the neighboring properties, this one and this one on the end. The Pinelands Homeowners Association has approved the addition. That property's zoned R-1B.
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What about water runoff? Is there any concern about that? Is there any concern about that?
What we've seen on this real close to the back fence, the ditch runs through the back, so it shouldn't be an issue.
So the ditch is already there, okay.
I think it's going to continue to flow the same way. Is that what y'all see? I mean, I don't see any change in the flow of it. Do you?
You talking about increase? What you talking about?
Redirecting water.
If you move it back, it's going to change where it falls at. So, but if the ditch already back there, then it doesn't really matter.
All in favor say aye. I'll oppose lock sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Next item is a conditional use permit for Roy Nichols at 3962A Highway 468. Mr. Nichols is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a fireworks stand and sell Christmas trees. This property is located on the corner of, or the south side of Highway 468. It's a 175.14 acre parcel. It's zoned R-1B. This circle here is the approximate location for the fireworks stand and the Christmas tree lot. It's almost directly across from the entrance to Live Oak subdivision. That's an aerial view. And then this is his site plan. There's an existing driveway coming on to this property. There's an existing cell tower right here, and it's hard to see on here, but he shows the location of the fireworks stand here, parking on this side of that existing driveway. And then the Christmas trees are going to be on back here to the west in this area. These are views of that property. And these are surrounding properties.
This the same one that used to be on the other corner?
No, sir. It's a new stand.
This is, same family used to have the one, the Nichols family had the location back behind the convenience store.
That's what I'm saying.
And they sold it two years ago, three years ago. Whoever has it now still operates it. I mean, they still, you know, they still utilize the site there.
And fireworks.
Yeah. And Mr. Nichols is obviously very confident he's going to get this conditional use because he's already got his gravel in and his pole in, and he's waiting permission from us to provide the meter base.
This doesn't have anything to do with fireworks.
Yes. Yes, selling fireworks.
We have our ordinance. If it changes hands, that goes away.
Well, they still operating it.
Okay, but this is a new stand, so.
This is, he's talking about the other one.
Yeah, Mr. Covington has the other stand. He's still going to be there.
Okay.
This is for a new stand to come in.
Yeah, but I thought, what's our ordinance?
This where you do an additional fireworks stand?
Yeah, right next door to it, almost.
Oh, man.
Well, yeah.
And this is, and this is going in residential, which you open up Pandora's Box.
One on top of the gas station.
Well, the other one's on top of the gas station, but.
But it was there before we adopted the ordinance.
Right. That's right. It was there.
It wasn't. It wasn't on it.
No, that fire station, that, now whether or not, our ordinance says if it, you know, if the deal dies, if the deal dies when it changes hand, if it says that, then we need to visit that because that property did change hand about two or three years ago.
The fireworks stand.
The fireworks stand.
The one behind, the Texaco Blue.
According to our fire coordinator, because we just had this other debacle open up on Old Fane Road, right on top of the gas station, and which should never happen. He went back and researched and read where, you know, where we voted, you know, when it all came up originally at 468, 469, right there.
So the, what it says is, is that existing stands were grandfathered. If they missed a season, they could not come back. As long as they continue to operate each season, then they were grandfathered, existing stands, which.
But is there, Craig, is there anything in there that gates the use?
I don't think there's anything specifically in the order that's obligated to pass a change.
You got them all over like that.
You hearing that? Hey, guys?
What? What? Craig?
I'm sorry. Let me get Jay's attention here. Jay? Jay, say it again, Craig.
I don't believe, subject to my further review, that I don't believe that the existing fireworks ordinance addresses a change of ownership issue. It addresses a continuation of use.
We've talked, we've gotten off into three different locations.
Let's go back to Highway 468, 469 first, if we go to Fane. And this, that location then is based on your review and subject to your review, is illegal use behind the convenience store. Granted, it's right behind the convenience store. Mr. Nichols wants to operate this one, but it's about 1,500 feet, linear feet to the west, you know, in an R-1B district. You open up potentially Pandora's Box and a zoning of R-1, the future fireworks stands, if we, you know, grant this one. So that's just some topics of discussion coming for the 15th.
Why would we grant, why, why is it a question, will we grant this or not? I mean, what, is this, I'm just asking.
They own several hundred acres, and he's put this back. I went and looked at it. It's, they've moved, it's not right on the road.
No, it's right on the road. Gravel, it is, like, right inside the gate. I went and looked at it too.
It's close to driveway up again. I, where I went and looked at was.
Right there, at the top of it, right there where it is.
At the top of that hill, which you turn in and probably go maybe 200 foot up there.
That's not that far to me.
But I mean, it shouldn't be cars, any obstruction.
I don't think it's going to be a traffic issue. I just think, you know, we had a discussion last March when we brought the distance down, and we talked about the zoning locations, that we did not, we didn't want to get outside the ag zoning or the C2 zoning.
Oh, that's why, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, we didn't want to get outside those zoning classifications.
I got you.
With fireworks stands, because then that opens up.
Right.
A more urban approach. But we got the hearing for the 15th, and I'll go ahead and make the motion to set the hearing. You can, you know, have an opportunity to come in and say what he wants to say, but that's just some issues that are not seen coming up.
Yeah, but I think we would do this one, then we get away from that agriculture deal.
We did have some specific regulations, though, for the ones with the gas station, because we require them to have 24-hour guards.
This has nothing to do with the gas station.
Well, I'm just saying, though, that, that we do have some specific rules for those. So if you don't mind, please revisit that and make sure.
For the 15th, and kind of we'll bring all this to a, for the discussion. I made the motion to set the public hearing.
I'll say.
Motion, Mr. Slay. Second by Mr. Morris. Any further discussion? Hold on a second.
What are we voting on, just set a hearing?
Just set a hearing. And if any, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose lock sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
All right. The last item is a dimensional variance that's being initiated by the county. It's due to the right-of-way acquisition for their Andrew Chapel Road Improvement Project. This is the first phase. There are 22 parcels that are going to be granted a variance if approved. It's being done to provide a permanent record that will attach to property records, so appraisers, real estate agents going forward will know that those are viewed, the existing homes and property will be viewed as illegal, non-conforming use. There may be some more to come as right-of-way is obtained. And RE1 requires one acre. Some of these lots won't meet that minimum after the right-of-way is obtained, and then there may be some that have some setback variances.
Motion to set the hearing. Motion, Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. I'll oppose lock sign. Motion carries. Slay, all potential review?
There is none today.
All right. Nuisance property hearing, continuation of the Judy and Danny Hall nuisance property on Holly Bush Road. Mr. Cross, Mr. Slay.
This is a continuation of the hearing that has been in place for the last couple of Planning Commission meetings on the property at 521 Holly Bush Road. I notice that Ms. Hall is here, and I notice that we have our department officials here.
There, yeah, there are some things that are outstanding. Brian, Brian did the inspection, and he can speak to what's left on the building code side, and then I think the fire department has one thing also.
For the most part, she's, she's done what we've asked her to do. There are a few things that haven't been taken care of yet. We've been working on permanent heat in the rooms. There is an egress issue with one of the windows in one of the bedrooms, but I think there's, we've talked about how to take care of that issue. But for the most part, things are, she, everything on our list, she has worked on. The ADA is still something we're looking at as far as ingress and egress to the property. Bathrooms, doors, things like that, you know, we're going to have to continue to work on that.
Jay, you want to give us an update?
Scott's getting a little old. Had knee surgery now. He's walking a little slow with a limp. He's trying, he's trying, he's trying to get sympathy.
I'm sure he appreciated you listening to the sharing of that with everybody.
You see, you see. Firemen need sympathy, and we play on little things like that right there, so.
Well, just so clean, the football players, they're back out there next day, aren't they?
Easy, yeah, yeah. Fire department, fire department.
I'll leave Scott alone, let him get up there and do what he's supposed to be doing.
I'm going to let Captain White address the issue. I've read everything that he's presented, and I think there's one item that's still we're waiting on, but I believe Ms. Hall is actively working on getting that completed right now, so if you would.
As far as the September 18 letter of funds list that we had of the fire and life safety issues, all of them have been completed and done with the exception of the sprinkler system. She does have the drawings that were approved on REN. I think Renee's office has a copy. It also went to the Superstate Rating Bureau. The county actually had them follow up and look into that. They released a letter on duty, I believe, so we're just waiting on that letter, their approval. It's just a approval thing. They've already agreed to it. It is by the code. Just waiting for that, for installation and our testing and everything on our end.
Yeah, and here's what I'd like to see from this point forward, as we continue on the final cleanup on the inspection side of it, instead of bringing everybody back to the board, I think it's okay, I'm good with what the rest of the board is, is just to communicate with Renee's office and Ms. Hall's office, or Ms. Hall's residence, and just be sure everybody's on the same page with everything. And that way, you don't have to come back in here and revisit everything. My main goal on this whole deal is to be sure we hit the life safety stuff. We've done that, full aggressiveness. We're working closely with Mr. Renee's office on the same side. So if we can just continue to have that email correspondence back and forth between you guys, I think it's okay not to come back in front of the board if Renee's good with that, Scott's good with that.
I'm great with it.
Slay, what do you think?
Yeah, absolutely. Even, even since everything is completed, you're up there.
Yeah, well, and I think for the same point, if you can follow up and say, hey, look, fire department's good, we're rolling absolutely on the email same point. Ms. Renee, if you're all right with that same side, we go with that point, and y'all keep corresponding that side.
Maybe build a little letter to Renee to say that the sprinkler system's in.
Yeah, just verifying all that and get that documentation set. And that way, you don't have to keep coming down here every 15, because I know we put a lot of emphasis on this for the last 30 days, and y'all have done a great job from the fire department, from the building department. Ms. Hall has done a great job in trying to do it all, and I appreciate the compassion you've got toward the life safety side of the code. So if we can just follow up with this continual discussion, if I need to do that in a motion to terminate off the agenda or what.
When we, yes.
Come out of it.
I think we'll formally go ahead and close this out, but let's hold that just for the moment.
With that on the backside.
But y'all can come back and see us if you just want to, Scott, that's fine.
I do appreciate that, absolutely. It's nice to have fire department guys who aren't asking for something. They're actually providing something to us.
It is.
Wait, that's happening. He's sitting, he's doing groundwork, though.
Yeah, I sent you up, Scott, for later, for a late visit.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. I certainly want to give Ms. Hall an opportunity. If she has anything that she feels like she needs to address, this would be an opportunity to do that. Are you okay? Yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
So let me add also my appreciation to the work, the cooperation among all parties, especially Ms. Hall, to address these issues. And I'm pleased to see that we got to a point now where we feel like the primary issues have been adequately and timely addressed. And so on that basis, and with your recommendation, Daniel, I would suggest that we close the public hearing officially, and that we leave open only a later report to the board by probably Renee's office indicating complete compliance and closure of the matter.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
About safety issue matter, right?
Yes.
Are they talking about the land used?
Yeah, we, those issues, Ms. Renee's office has other issues that are beyond the life safety issues that are also being addressed.
That being separate.
Yes, sir. So obviously, we would want, we would be open to any interim reports that need to come to suggest, say that the sprinkler system has in fact been installed and tested and it's passed. I could see that as an interim report while there may be some additional building code side issues that remain to be addressed. But I hope would be that we get a, we get a later report that closes the whole matter.
Okay. That'd be my motion, Ms. Renee.
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. I'll oppose lock sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Moving on to the discussion of utility permit home inspection report procedures. You have something on your desk that's like this that you might want to refer to? All right, Ms. Renee, it's all yours.
All right. So basically, we would like to do away with the home inspection report and just require a utility permit every time there's a name change at the power company for everybody, just standards. That way, we don't have to review those. Some of those are 60 pages long. They don't really contain a lot of the information from a building code standpoint that we need to see if we look at health and safety. So anyway, we have a list of the things that we think are important to be checked. It also appears like lately some of the things are being omitted, maybe just so we don't call them out and make them be repaired or fixed. So it just doesn't seem to be working. Brian may have some instances that he can tell you about specifically.
Yeah, I mean, they're showing a tree, a branch trimming up against the house, but they don't make any mention of the smoke detectors in the home, or egress windows, or just, they've actually, I've had multiple calls from these inspectors, and they want to know what I look for, and I thought that we were going to be on the same page, and I told them some of the things we look for. Now, those items aren't in the reports. So I believe that they're intentionally removing these items so they can pass the inspection. And I have to go through these things and make sure that all the life safety is covered, and sometimes they don't make mention of things, but they're, they do show pictures, and I catch some of these things in the pictures that they never mentioned. So I write it up, but you know, that's, that's what we're dealing with, and it takes a lot of time to.
To review it.
And it's hard to do a good, if we could do a thorough inspection of these homes and make sure that they were safe, that's, you know, that's what we want to do, but it's hard, too, when you're just looking at a piece of paper or something, it's not very clear what's going on.
One thing, though, that I wanted to point out is, we, during the time period from January 1st of this year through yesterday, 10 months' time, we did a total of 1,350 utility permits. Out of those, there were 151 that passed inspection with no charge due to the home inspection report. So if we picked up 151, if you divide that by 10 months, that 10-month period, there would only be an increase to us of 15 per month. So I mean, we're doing the bulk of the inspections anyway.
Would you repeat those numbers?
So the total utility permits that we had for a 10-month period was 1,350. So out of that 1,350, we did all of those inspections other than 151 over a 10-month, 151 in a 10-month period. So we could handle the increase. We could, you know, it's not going to be a full inspection per day, even.
Can we depend on the power company to tell us every time it changes name? Because we're having some problems already with that.
For the most part, yes. You know, there is one company that told us in the beginning that they would do the best they could with it, but you know, every now and then, they do tell the people, but there's no recourse from them if they don't come on in. One of them gives them five days, and if they don't come, then they cut them off.
Are we talking about Southern Pine?
No, sir.
So they're doing good.
Southern Pine, to my knowledge, is doing good.
That's right. So we're talking about the other association?
Yes.
So why am I standing up here? I really don't have to be honest with you.
I have a question. I know, Brian, you're more than qualified to go out and do this, and the number one concern, well, there's a couple, actually. One, they created a market, you know, for people to go out and start businesses doing this, but they're only doing 150 a month, and there's several.
10 months.
10 months.
150 over 10 months.
Yes.
Well, so they're not.
No, no, well, now, to be clear, they're doing more than that. But we look at those reports. If we see something in there that we deem as a health or safety, then we require them to fix it. So they fix it, and then we go do, we do our inspection, yeah.
When you guys initially adopted your utility inspection ordinance, if the feeling, the sense of the board at the time was, people will get private home inspection reports as a part of the transaction, and they will have to pay for those, and the thought process was, let them just turn that in instead of having to pay for an additional inspection. We will review the report, and we will either fail or pass on the basis of the report so that they don't have to double-dip on paying for an inspection. That, that was the thought process, and it made sense at the time. Unfortunately, what's, what has transpired is, they have figured out how to gain the system, apparently, and are submitting reports that have no references to what would clearly fail under a life safety inspection that Brian would do, would conduct. I will tell you, anecdotally, this is not scientific. I have to hold every real estate agent accountable. I will tell you, and it sounds a little bit contradictory, the real estate agents that I'm familiar with would love to see this home inspection loophole done away with completely. They would prefer, they would prefer that the county perform the life safety inspection.
Well, they would actually prefer it all go away.
They would love to have another inspection. I understand, we all understand.
It really would be easier for them, though. Then they wouldn't have to fool with getting that long home inspection report in, because it's a process, you know? They have to email it to us, and it would just be simple. Everybody would know what's required. It would be easy.
Well, I was just, everybody be prepared. We are going to need some fallback, flack from those businesses that were started when we cut them out. There, we're going to hear from them.
I mean, that part, but.
We're not really cutting them out, guys. I think what we're doing is we're saying, get your home inspection, go forward with your home inspection, because there will be things that Brian is not specifically looking for.
That's what I was fixing to add. We're looking for health and safety issues.
Why couldn't they have a checklist?
If it's a crack in the driveway.
Yeah. It's a hairline crack. Things like that. There's a hose in there that's leaking a little bit, things like that. I'm looking for, can these children get out of that bedroom? You know, I don't know if that window, I don't know, I don't know if they can get out of this door. You know, that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, how can we, I mean, it's like, didn't they have a checklist that we had that, I mean, that, I mean, couldn't they do that and still continue to do it if they wanted to? They covered the health safety.
What you got to keep in mind, Jerry, is that, and this is, again, anecdote, but my assumption is that the home inspectors have been counseled by legal advisors. There are some things they probably just need to stay away from that don't affect value of the house.
I got you.
To me, this is more uniform. Everybody's on the same playing field, and it's not who brother-in-law you can get to come write your report. It's, I mean, there's only one part of this that I'm uncomfortable with, and that's if I deceased and leave my property to my daughter, I'm not selling it, but it is changing names, and she may have to do a lot of, say, my home's 30 years old, 40. She's going to have to pay, and nobody made any money out of transaction to get.
It happened the other day. I went out, a man died, and his daughter got the house, and we had to go out and do an inspection.
We get inspections.
Yeah.
And she was very upset by it.
If it, I mean, if it's a life safety issue, I understand, don't move in until this wiring is fixed, or, but if the cold water doesn't run a volume as much as we might think it should. I hate to tell them, like, you can't have your father's, well, you can have it, but you can't live in your father's, you know?
So I'd like there's a consensus to agree to do what Renee wants to do. Is this something to be done at commission meeting or open into the supervisory meeting?
Well, I think.
We just need to fine-tune a couple things.
I just put discussion on my agenda.
One, the number one, I don't know if y'all have ever had phone calls from realtors panicking, that they have, you know, somebody closed the house, they need to move in, it's they need to move in, it's Friday afternoon, need to get the fire cut on. We need to make sure that we're on top of that, Brian.
We do inspections.
You know, these last-minute inspections, you know, we need to make sure we're there so that someone's ready to move in on Friday and we can get there and get the inspection done so they get the fire cut on for the weekend.
Oh, yeah, I get those calls.
We do do.
So we do that.
And the last year I've had two and unbelievable how quickly they responded.
Yeah.
Same here.
Yeah.
Which we do try to do that, but a lot of times, you know, we have to meet them to be able to get into the house. A lot of times they give us a time, we're there, they don't come, they're not on time, we have to wait.
And there's furniture in the home, we can't go in by ourselves for fear of, you know, we steal something. You know, then we have to get a, another inspector from another part of the county to come go with us just so we can get the inspection.
What's our, what's our backup plan?
As far as what?
Brian's out sick vacation.
Well, I have adequate staff to, we, we get our inspections done, they hustle.
We have, we have people capable of doing adequate inspection that he's doing.
Right, and you know, we have Jerry Bound's back part-time, so he's helping with that as well, so.
Well, we're on the same, our, our inspectors are on the same page. We pass train, every, everybody knows, everybody does things the same way.
Well, we're getting brought up speed, right?
Yes.
Everybody, I heard we passed my past test.
They do.
Which is great, glad to hear it.
And he's studying to take another one.
That's wonderful.
We are not liked anymore.
Okay now, Brian, really.
I, I would say we're, we're doing our job.
For Jay's part, I think that we should always encourage anybody's buying a house to do their due, I mean, if a due diligence is to hire an inspector to satisfy themselves, I welcome them to do that. I mean, don't do anything but support us to me. I would encourage that if you had never built a home.
I think this will eventually be well-received as an appropriate change. I would suggest that we put it on the agenda for Monday. Y'all have an opportunity now over the weekend sort of thinking through and maybe talk to others about, about possibilities, feedback if they want to. But I would suggest we get it on the agenda for Monday.
Renee told me I had to vote for it, so I would.
Anything else to be discussed aside the planning, Commissioner Renee?
I, I do not think so. Um, no.
Is there a motion to recess this meeting to Thursday, the twenty ninth at eight, nine a.m.?
That's something we'd rather, today?
Probably Monday. This is on a nuisance property, we've gotten a quote to.
Good. Monday, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Cross? Second with the gains, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, so we are out of that meeting and I call the order of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, Ms. Janus, any public comments?
Okay, Renee. Yeah, I just initially, it was a tie vote.
I think.
Okay.
I don't think they're going to use it.
Okay. So you, so. Okay, come on up Dave, Greg, essential, Mr. Planning. Anybody else besides them, Ms. Janus? Hey Craig, can anyone, one way back? Yeah, please. All right, Dave, have at it, man.
Thank you. As y'all remember, several months ago, we were asked to, to get with Craig, get with the Chancery Clerk's Office, pull all the county's ordinances and look at, look for redundancy. For example, I believe you had four or five animal control ordinances, deer ordinances, that, that type of thing. So we worked with Craig, Jessica helped us pull the ordinances. We sat down, went through each of those ordinances, determined with Craig's help which one was relevant and which is the newest of each of those ordinances and which ones could be discarded. From there, we had to get everything in the same format and clean because we had hard copies of the original ordinances that were on file which we were able to scan in and preserve those in a digital format, but we also had to transfer everything into a easily readable format that was clean and uniform so as people search your, your ordinances, everything looks the same. Uh, from there, we had to get that into some type of online searchable format that would easily migrate into the county's website. Uh, so that's where we're at today and we just kind of wanted to show you where we're at and, I mean, I think this is ninety-nine point nine percent complete. Uh, Marcus tells me this is actually hosted currently on the county's backup site. He's working to get it at some point when y'all are okay with everything to have it on the county's actual website. Uh, we're also, I think there's a couple of things on the, uh, the searchable format. Marcus had to contact Google and, and there's a form you have to submit saying that's a government function and they, they will take away any ads, you know, when you go to Google and you search something, you, a lot of times you get ads, but this way, because it is a government site, they, you won't see that, so it will be a little more streamlined. Uh, but what you see here is how it will look when you get it on the county's website. You can see you have each of the ordinances that again, and this does include your development ordinance as well as your zoning ordinance. Animal control, that's the latest, most relevant. Your alcohol ordinance is that type of thing, fireworks was mentioned earlier. Uh, this is what people will see, this is a clean format, that's why you don't see the signatures. Uh, if you click for the original, this will take you to a scan of the original signed document. Uh, so if you need to know when this ordinance was adopted and that sort of thing. Uh, so the idea is to give citizens, developers, anyone else, the, the tools to go to the county's website. If they need to know what's, you know, what's regulated, what ordinance applies to what, they can look for it. Uh, if they want to search for pit bulls or whatever, this will pull up each ordinance that addresses that, which of course in this case would be animal control.
This is where the ads are, that's going away.
Yeah, the first few are the, the ads that pop up. And again, we're in the process of having that eliminated. It may take a day or so, I think.
Yeah.
Mention? Okay, a couple of days.
And if you wanted to search for a specific term.
Right, and I don't know if you can see it on the screen, the screen's a little dim, but it actually highlights the term you're searching in that document and that ordinance. Overall, I think this will be a good tool. I think it's a good addition to the county's website. Uh, hopefully save county staff some phone calls and some time searching. Uh, you know, when we started this thing, Craig and I had a stack literally that tall of county ordinances. Uh, you know, and a lot of times I know if somebody calls and asks for something, Ms. Laura, Craig, somebody has to go through all that and try to figure out which one's the latest and, and this way, this has been taken care of. Also, this is easily updated. If y'all pass any ordinance, amend an ordinance, you mentioned earlier that you amended the fireworks ordinance back in March. Uh, that's just a matter of updating it on your online version, so that's easy to do. I couldn't mention anything.
Can you do a search for liquor? Let's see.
Uh, I don't think, I don't think you'd be able to sell it in the county right now, Jack. I think you gave it right to the county.
Yeah, it looks like it's.
So it's under, it's mentioned under two different ordinances?
Right. Okay, it's mentioned under your outdoor entertainment as well as the zoning ordinance does mention it as well. I think in the zoning ordinance, memory serves me, it's probably in reference to liquor stores or sale of liquor or something along those lines, land use related.
Does that anywhere in their reference resort areas?
That's state law, Jay. It's not going to be in our ordinances.
Okay.
That's state law.
It's made an amendment.
Yes. Sixty-seven one five.
Hours of operation, you talking about?
Yeah. Sixty-seven one five.
Okay, so that's something we, all right.
Typically, we have the ability to regulate hours of operate, of, of operation. But there's debate about just how much we can regulate what has been given qualified resort status. My position is we can regulate hours of operation, but there are other things that we simply cannot regulate the way that we regulate anything else. Once the state gives the implemater and places that resort status area in place, the state regulates that area. It's not to suggest that the sheriff can't go in there and handle business if somebody is committing criminal acts. It's a different deal. I'm talking about regulation of the operation itself.
Tobacco use on county property, I didn't know we had one of them.
Yeah, did you know you have a fallout shelter ordinance also, I think that one. And I failed to mention, we went back to everything from nineteen sixty-nine onwards. So I think the idea was if it predates that, it's probably not relevant.
Animal, uh, pit bull, uh, conditions.
Go down to wild animal variance, wild animal variance right there.
Can we do a search for pit bulls?
Yeah.
Can you do that again, Greg?
So you're putting pit bull in with wild animal?
No, I'm just trying to read where is the requirements we're having.
It's all encompassing of wild animal. There's people out there, Jerry, that would try to keep something that's not.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just saying, but you, you're putting it in with the wild animal, okay. But I was just thinking, if you're going to pull it up, you wouldn't pull up pit, wild animal.
Yeah. It's under the wild animal variance ordinance. That's where we regulate. If somebody will keep a pit. Or a stacker share, stacker share. They have to, they have to go through that whole.
Well, I understood, I'm just saying if I was sitting out here and I wanted to pull it up, I'd probably pull up pit bull and go, well, I don't see anything.
Yeah, well, you do.
I know that we have a form, you know, that we have to fill out.
And as we did with the development ordinance, we'll take that form and make it form fillable. So if someone's trying to submit it, then they can fill it out online and print it and submit it. Um, as well as just print it and handwrite it if they search.
Yeah, as, as part of this, this project, uh, we were able to do that to your development ordinance and give it to Buster and Tim. So if they have someone asking for that, they're able to easily email it to them, it's form fillable. They can do it online and then resubmit it by email. So that was something I probably should have mentioned as well.
This is the latest one we have that has.
We can take that and add it in as well, the form.
See, this is the form that's up in the form and all of it. It goes with the ordinance.
Yeah, that kind of needs to be available.
Yeah, that's one of the other.
Yeah, we can add that. And like I say, as you make additions or changes, it's easily updated. Um, I would mention, I appreciate Marcus, your IT guy, he was very helpful to get this launched and, and get the final. Uh, even got an email from him about midnight last night he was working on it, so I appreciate that, a lot of help. Uh, are there any questions or?
Him and Janus must have been working, that's when I got my agenda.
Uh, do you want, before, before this thing gets published or gets pushed out for us to have the opportunity to go back to this site and, and look to make sure that we don't have issues? Is that available, Marcus, to try to get us opportunity to go look at this, 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 the old, the backdoor website, whatever you call it? You know, make that happen?
We have commonly used ordinances or zoning. We need to have zoning easily accessible off of, I think our, our, uh, development page.
I don't think we're going to take anything that's already up on the front page, Jay. We're not going to take that off and substitute this. This will be in addition to what's there, so the zoning ordinance is building on this.
And hopefully when we redesign our website, it'll be more.
Well, now, I know the development ordinance did have a function built in where, is that no longer available?
It is, but it's not currently on the website. It hasn't, it's still the stagnant PDF on the website. It hasn't been replaced.
Where they have to print out the form, fill it out.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
That's what's on the site today.
Tim and I need to finish, um, the formula, the calculations in the backside of that application. And once we get that done, then we can replace the PDF with a form fillable PDF of the development ordinance.
Under this right here.
Not under this. We can add it here as well, but we're talking more in terms of on the community development page or the front page.
So are you talking about using Adobe?
Yes, for that purpose.
Yeah, I would think when you redesign your website, you know how today you have minutes and meetings button, the maps button, that type of thing? I would think you'd want an ordinances button or some, something where it's, you know, obvious to the, to the public.
This is our second run at it. I, I want y'all to show the first run at it.
Which version, the PDF version or the, the old website?
Yeah, and I.
I want you to show the first one you developed for us that looks really good and, and functions really well.
I don't think I have it with me today. Sorry.
Isn't that convenient?
I do, I didn't load it on this computer.
And what Jay's referring to, we initially built this thing in Adobe, uh, where it would be a searchable PDF. And it, it worked really well, it works really nice for anybody that has Adobe. The problem is the first time we sat down with Marcus, he pulled up his Mac computer, which doesn't run Adobe and it does have a reader, you're able to see everything.
But it has no search, the search feature is lost. And that's what, the benefit to this is exactly what you're saying, you don't have to have in a roundabout way, you don't have to have Adobe to use this. Um, and it can be accessed on mobile devices as well. It is scalable to mobile devices. Um, so anyone can access it and use it. Um, yes, I love my PDF, my Adobe version, I love it, sorry. Um, that, the issue there is you would have to download an Adobe product to be able to use the full features of it. Um, and so that unfortunately makes it more difficult for the general public. Especially anyone using, most browsers today, web browsers today have an auto reader built in, they're not pulling Adobe anymore. Um, so you lose all of that functionality.
All right. Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Bishop, you did.
Glad to have y'all. Good to see y'all.
You know, I'm like thrilled about the way it looks. You know, I'd like for it to look a little more professional. I don't know how to make that happen since I'm not a web developer, but, you know, I got spoiled looking at the other one that looked great. You know, and had all the functionality built into it, but to go from that to this is night and day and.
Hell, I would, I don't know how to prepare.
Well, it's very convenient she forgot the other one, yeah.
I didn't see the other one either, so I don't know what.
Yeah, but how, how were you?
I know, I know, I know we can't use the other one because everybody uses iPads and iPhones and that relegated them to not being able to use it, so.
Right, they, they would be forced to download Adobe to even use it was the issue there, we.
But even on our regular website, tools around it, I think that maybe we should put some boxes around some of these where they're just underscore hyperlinks, you know, kind of pretty it up, make it look better uh, than just having a, a statement with some underlines.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could change the look of it.
I do, and I know y'all have worked hard at it and, and I appreciate it, I do. But this is our one shot at it.
Well, we, well, we're going to take a week to, for us to look through it. Why don't you get them and give them some ideas? Really? I mean, we got a week or so.
Yeah, we, we got a web designer in-house, so if there's, if it's just the look of it, we can certainly change that.
Well, yeah, it's still, it still needs to piggyback on what our new web design is, right?
Yeah, it needs to enter, it needs.
So I mean, it almost, it almost kind of need to, it needs to wait until we get our new website out, I would think.
I may be making a mountain out of a building, you know, let's move forward with what we got, but, uh, I, I just.
Maybe when, when, when Marcus talks to our web folks who are redesigning, maybe you can throw this as a suggestion to kind of, you know, we've got this coming and need to kind of like, make, kind of spruce it up some, see what they.
We can see, um, the way we were originally, um, looking at putting all of this into one document, uh, what we asked them to do was produce collapsible content so that everything could be within one document. Uh, they could not do that in their current content management system, it wasn't capable of doing that.
And that's our current web developer.
That's right, that's our current.
Are there other current web developers that would be willing to do that?
Oh, yes, for sure.
I'm not so sure if we ain't ready to move and find us another.
But before we start spending money with this other group, let's, let's make a decision about that. You know, we've already approved Marcus to go do something with this, this group.gov or whoever they are.
Uh, we ain't proved nothing. We ain't spent no money and.
I thought we did. Bishop Morris says we have spent some money.
We haven't spent eleven million, or eleven thousand.
Oh goodness.
Eleven million yet.
Eleven, what did we miss, Gaines?
Did we spend the eleven thousand?
No, we have not spent all of it. In order to keep the, the package that they had given us at the mount, we were required to put a small retainer in and that was approved and we did. And that's all that's been done at this point.
What do you think, Marcus? What do you think, what do you think?
I think at this point, at least for the next, um, at, at least for the next year, uh, you know, we may be kind of stuck in place with them. We have already committed some money to that. We can upload custom content to their website. They will, uh, they will, you know, upload it for us basically. Uh, there is a couple of days delay when you send it.
Basically, uh, there is a couple of days delay when you send it to them before they get it done for you, uh, but it's not a terrible turnaround time. But, uh, anytime we want something that is outside of what their content management system is capable of, uh, they, they will give us a custom rate to add that in there. Or, um, or we can go out and develop it on our own, um, which I, I mean, I'm willing to put some time behind, uh, you know, doing the collapsible content or something if we need to do that on our side. Uh, you know, we can, we can take, make some changes to make this look differently.
I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with, uh, filing a breach contract with them because there's been several items that they signed on the dotted line that they would have provided for us that one hundred percent are, and goes. And I don't see how we could lose other than time. Do you?
Besides, Richard Slay's fees, you know, we'd lose that too. But I mean, you gotta judge it off. I mean, because you go litigate, you know, you got the cost of litigation, you know, compared to what you end up just saying, just cut your losses. You need to a whole different group, you know?
Well, there's two things. One is the, uh, being able to post each, each, you know, station where we have available for rent, have a calendar of events and knowing that it's possible we may not be able to rent it online due to the deposit, deposit scenario, you know, scenario. But also the nine one one feature of people being able to register and be notified about weather. Those two by themselves should be enough to take care of any issues we may have.
That would be our argument, obviously, uh, and it would be a strong enough argument. They would have counter arguments they can make, you know, as well as anybody in here, Jay. Litigation is not certain at all. My fault would be if you're displeased with the service, we need to be looking for an alternative.
Have, have we addressed those two really hard with them?
I don't know. There's been addressed confrontationally.
Before, before we talk of litigation, why don't we make sure that they understand what Jay wants and they tell us why they can't do it?
We're going through a design.
It was, it was suggested, uh, pretty, you know, heated back before Rusty left. We got down to nuts and bolts of it and they finally admitted they couldn't do it.
That's right. Sure did. I remember that.
We've discussed this in detail.
I think we're gonna put it over to, to do list, I think.
We're going through a design refresh right now where I have noted those two as two of the top priority items, the calendars specifically, um, and, uh, and the text notifications. Um, so we're, we're trying to address those. If it's capable of it, we're gonna make it do it. If it's not, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out, you know, what we can do, but. But, you know, tho- those are two of my top priorities on the design refresh. I think that's kind of outside of this discussion. We were trying to do this outside of, um, outside of the website. When the PDF wasn't cross-device capable, we were trying to come up with another method of getting it in a searchable format online so the public could view it and go and, go and see it and get what they, get what information they needed to get.
What, like you said, other web companies could vent, be able to take care of what we need here relatively easy. And it's almost like they're not willing to work with us at all to make this a user friendly that, uh, assist us and move forward. This should have been something that they could done, uh, you know, and, and at no charge even or minimum charge. And have something very nice looking and, and functional.
Well, what we've got here would probably be, their content management system would probably be capable, capable of this format. Collapsible content was what we were trying to achieve at first and, and that was, um, that was something that they were not capable of, which is why we started going down the avenue of HTML.
I think some of the problem may even be like, uh, the way our regulations are, the way we handle taking a deposit for renting a building and then refunding that deposit. And we, we wanna be friendly and help people that wanna come and give a check, uh, that may not even have a credit card or whatever. And I think some of the problem, if I remember right, on that calendar and reserving things, we would have to change some of the way we do business and not just the computer, I think.
I think you could, I think you could update the calendar per se. We just couldn't, we couldn't negotiate the deposits and stuff like that. Now it's getting too convoluted. We could, we could update the calendar and may say it's available, not available, stuff like that.
We could integrate it a hundred percent. It cannot be a hundred percent integrated.
I agree.
But at least someone should be able to look out there and say, hey, this weekend's available. Let's call them up and book it.
And at one time it was available, a calendar for like one of the rentals out in Andrews there, we shared out there. But for some reason it was not really good and it would lose connection because when I was putting it on there, you could look and see the availability. But then it went away and it, it, it would mess up with the website.
And, and we're gonna get a working calendar out there. I.
For seventy thousand dollars, I would hope we would get a lot more than what we have.
I understand.
Jay's being tough today.
Anything else to give for, for Dave or Greg or Marcus? Guys, anything else for us? Are we good? Everybody's good?
I thank y'all.
Marcus, you gave us.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it.
Y'all, y'all want a link that you can browse through this?
Yeah, coming back.
Yeah. Thanks, Marcus.
Thank you.
Greg, Nate, thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? If not, I'll entertain a basis for the October 12 minutes. Blessed by Mr. Morrison, second of the South. Oh, okay. There we go. Thank you, man. I appreciate that.
I'm not looking at the right.
We're looking, all right, Mr. Slay, it's up to you now.
Could have gone ahead and knocked that out, man.
First item under my section of the, of the, uh, work meeting agenda is a discussion of and potential action to revise the use policies for the Rankin County Safe Room.
I say we sell it. Can we make a mission, put it on the market to sell?
So, uh, I'm going, I'm not gonna throw the sheriff under the bus, but this, this request, uh, is, as we, as we know, the sheriff, uh, has been given responsibility for the safe room, uh, and, and does a fantastic job. Ken Sullivan, uh, oversees the safe room. There is a, you may not have even been aware, but, um, a prior board has approved rental policies and procedures that are associated with the use of the safe room. So this is during situations where it's not being used specifically as a safe room for inclement weather. It's in other situations where it's made available for use typically in association with whatever's happening with the horse bar. And so, um, the, the question.
It's not the horse bar.
With the multipurpose arena.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. That's strike number one, I believe.
I apologize.
Multipurpose building.
Yes.
Why don't you just go ahead and name it?
Rankin County Multipurpose Building. I thought it was a good name.
The Steve Gaines Multipurpose Arena. All right. So what, so what the question before you is, the, the current use policies prohibit the use of alcoholic beverages in or in the facility or on the property. Uh, and the, uh, sheriff's office gets inundated with requests to allow use of alcohol in the safe room. The question then becomes, is the board of a mind to allow for the amendment of the policies to allow alcohol in the safe room?
That's only in the safe room.
Only in.
Only rent, rent for events.
I don't think you should have a twelve hundred pound horse and a fifth whiskey inside.
And y'all want to see it.
Yeah, that's what you got.
Yeah, but I'm talking about just for events in the safe room.
Inside the safe room.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, I would like to have some kind of restriction on there, uh, because, uh, you are children present, maybe something. Maybe, I know you may have a weddin', but I just don't wanna, I wanna be real strict on.
The city of Brandon had developed some kind of ordinance with their civic center about those that can come in and sell and do that. You know, that, that just anybody can open up with a case of Scotch or whatever and, you know, set up a little table there, you know? That's not what we're talking about, is it?
Uh, I think what we would be talking about here is whatever this board feels comfortable allowing, number one. Number two, I would propose that the policy just simply be, uh, that we, that we look into how other political subdivisions are controlling alcohol use and service on their, in their facilities, on their grounds, and consider how we might, uh, append an exhibit to this that references those kinds of policies. I wouldn't propose that we stick some lengthy policy embedded inside regulatory document. We would just simply append that as an exhibit. I would say that the language should be something along the lines of, um, alcohol, uh, if it is allowed, will be subject to, uh, the regulation of the sheriff or his designee in accordance with the use policies attached. And, and just make it clear that it's gonna be up to whoever the sheriff puts in charge of determining whether or not it's gonna be allowed for a given context. That way, if it's, if, if it's clear on the front end that this is gonna be, uh, mostly a, a, a youth oriented event, it ain't happening.
No.
If it's gonna end up being, uh, something where there's some concerns about whether or not the, the potential user has the ability to control that, maybe it's not gonna be allowed in that context, uh, but give the flexibility to the sheriff to regulate it how you see fit. And we can look into what, how Brandon's controlling that.
You know, thank goodness we have, uh, this intelligent attorney can let me figure it out, but I don't have an issue with somebody. I have champagne in the wedding. But I want somebody to rent a turn and have a party and have a cash bar inside too, you know?
Right.
Unlimited alcohol, you know, just some kind of balance there. I don't know what that is.
You still love that horse?
I just, I, I would suggest, look at Brandon, look at Pearl River. I don't know if they've got anything, you know, but, but kind of the highlights, but from a liability standpoint, we can't be sued, but, you know, I guess we can, but.
I think it's important for you guys to understand, this is a county facility. All right, that's number one. Number two, we have other county facilities where we just outright prohibit alcohol use in those facilities. I want you to understand that, okay? So this would be a unique setting. Uh, I think the fact that the sheriff is specifically in control of and responsible for that building is a dynamic here that differentiates from other facilities, okay? I, I do wanna point that out. And, and so there's less of a concern, obviously, that something's gonna get out of hand. But, but I do wanna point out that it, this would be unique in the county in that no other facility that's owned by the county could you have alcohol served.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So this would be a distinction, all right?
It would have to be only at.
I'd like to see you come back on the fifteenth with, with, have opportunity to talk to Flo Wood, Brandon, whoever else. When they regulate stuff inside their own, um, I know Brandon went through that when they, when we passed the liquor deal. Baker created a specific set of ordinances for, for creating opportunities to sell alcohol inside the civic center, you know? You know, for, that's a requirements, have you licensed, you know, it had to be a caterer, you know, not just anybody could roll in with a case of whiskey and go to town. And, uh, so I don't know if that's appropriate or not. And Brian, you, you may, you, you feel it better than I do. I just, I'm real careful about it. I know you would be, but.
So from a, from a division of labor, uh, and who, who really should be leading this effort, I would propose that, uh, that Paul Holly, sheriff's attorney, uh, be tasked with developing a proposed set of use policies around this issue. Uh, and I will assist in that, uh, but I wanna make it clear that, I mean, the sheriff handles this facility and does a masterful job at it. And I would like for his folks to be primarily responsible for developing that use policy. They're, they're gonna have to enforce it. It needs to be them that comes up with what is best. You guys, uh, from an overarching perspective, would have to permit it because ultimately it ends up being your owned, your, your ownership. The building is, is in your hands and the liability exposure that's there, and that's another issue that I wanna point out. We need to address this with the county's insurer and find out what, if any, impact this has from liability standpoint. Get the drab shop issue and some other things. And, and while the county not necessarily would have exposure by virtue of the fact that we're essentially immune, anyone serving and permitting it would in fact then be exposing themselves to potential liability. And that would need to be addressed. We may want to address that to make sure on the front end that they've got adequate coverage for that purpose. Uh, and, and the reason that I'm even bringing it up, just, you know, in, in light of the fact that we would be immune, is that we're still going to get drug into the litigation.
Hey, so, let me ask one question real quick. I know it was built before we came on this board here. Was there, and it was a grant funded issue. Is there any kind of federal regulations, since they gave the money to do it, that restricts us to do anything like that? I mean, I'm just off the top of my head, I'm asking.
I'm not familiar with anything in the FEMA guidelines with respect to the building itself. Uh, I'm not familiar with anything that would address ultimately the use of the facility beyond the standpoint that it has to meet certain minimum requirements. And it, and its primary use has to be as a safe room for inclement weather situations.
I just didn't know if there was.
I don't think they regulate beyond that.
You get a good many calls on that.
Not, not really. Most people that rent, uh, don't, don't, don't even think about serving alcohol because most of it, unless it's youth oriented. And, you know, most of the, you said, we don't get money off of it anyway because it's the schools won't have a dance there or a church won't have something there, a youth night there or something. So, you know, most of us all revolve around youth.
I had, I had a call. I had a call and they were.
So receptions.
Yeah.
And then I'm coming.
We have a lot of weddings.
Yeah, the wedding reception issue, uh.
Yeah, I had a call. They, they asked, did they just, could, were they, would we allow them to serve, have a wine? And that's, in fact, I just wanna ask y'all. I said, I can't do it.
Well, it's in your thinking. One thing, one of the first might, maybe rules, we do some kind of amendment to this is no alcohol sales at all. That way, that'd knock out.
Yeah, I don't want them to sell them.
More.
Yep. Yes.
So we'll, the boss back in the sheriff's court, Paul's court, will work with you to come up with some ideas. And we'll come back at the fifteenth or end of the month.
Right. I, I don't wanna leave the impression that I'm trying to pawn this off. I, I, I think I would like for permission to work closely with Paul Holly, the sheriff's attorney, to develop.
Y'all need, I think it's good. I mean.
Yeah, so, all right, we'll work together on it, uh, but I, I, I did not want to exclude Mr. Holly from coming up with a proposed set. I think he needs to be heavily involved.
Fair enough. What's she for the fifteenth then? My work?
Yes, sir.
Brian, speaking of the safe room, last night, do we have a good number of people?
Yeah, emailed all y'all. Is, uh, y'all supposed to get an email with all the storm damage in? There were seventy one people.
Seventy one.
Last night.
Mr. Slay, next.
Yes. Item B under my section, gentlemen, is, uh, simply a revision to an agreement with MDOT that you guys have already executed. What we're asking for is for the board to acknowledge and then approve the substitution of Exhibit A to that previously approved agreement that instead of selecting a different third-party bridge inspector, and this comes from DOT's request, we will be, uh, authorizing our consulting engineer, engineering service to provide the bridge inspection service instead of that other third party. And so the Exhibit A to the agreement with DOT between the county and DOT will be amended to reflect that engineering service will provide the bridge inspection work and reports for us instead of that other third party.
Motion to approve by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Oster, you're up.
Yeah, so with your permission, Mr. Morrison, item C, you may be looking at a, at a prior version of the work section of the work meeting agenda.
He saw it.
Is it on there? Okay.
It's on there. I'm just taking the liberty of moving on.
I'm sorry. I wasn't. I didn't pick up on, I didn't smell what you were cooking there, Bob. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Russ. Like, go ahead with the heavy.
Well, you know, I think, um, uh, I, I intended and wanted this to be on the Monday agenda when we have other co-counsel with us on Monday. And I would ask if, if it's okay, let's move that item right there to Monday.
That's right. You move it to, Bob.
At least.
Bob wanna get a motion and three votes to do that.
We move it to January meeting Monday.
It's, uh.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can we get it by acclamation?
We'll be with you Monday.
Talk about it on Monday when, when we have folks that have been helping us with that.
Yeah, that's not a problem. All right. Anything else? Ms. Oster, you're up.
See, you got what, what you wanted there. First thing I have is to award the bid for the two thousand eighteen Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, and that would be to care environmental. And our date is Saturday, November the seventeenth.
And that's for what all, when we ask?
We have a advertisement that will go in the paper. It will run twice and it tells what we accept and what we do not accept.
Motion to approve.
Some of it.
Mr. Morrison approves it. Mr. Bishop, not Mr. Mr. Cross, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. B, please, ma'am.
Ratification of approval of an emergency. Ratification of approval of an emergency purchase for a grinder pump for sewer lift station.
Motion approved.
Where's that at?
Yeah, it's, uh.
What, somebody got comment? Motion approved by Mr. Morrison.
Tell me where, say, what's the location of it?
It's at the.
Already in use, it's ratified, we're using it.
Right, it's just, you have to put in, you have to put in emergency purchase on the next.
Run safe room, backed up.
Yeah, I saw it.
That's something that's what I'm going to need to get around, hook the lift station up, generally.
I got you, I got you.
Right, an emergency purchase has to put on, be put on the next available meeting date.
Motion, Mr. Crowell, second, by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye, all opposed, like sign, motion carries. Discussion of agendas on Monday, other than moving the heavy hog ordinance to Monday, it's not on there now, anything else? Y'all have questions on cassette or regular?
Mike may have one thing, Harrison, Harrison may have something.
Yeah, we're not done yet, though, y'all, y'all do with the agendas?
I thought he had something on the agenda.
Well, he's got something in additional business, we're not there yet. Are y'all good on the agendas then? Ready to move forward? Additional business, alright, Mr. Harrison, come on up, share with us your thoughts.
Oh, y'all asked me to check into a striping machine. Looked at a couple of different, or several different programs, finally found one that was bought in Washington County, had it for two years, me and Craig both looked at it, I mean, it's a bid type item, we'll have to go through reverse auction, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Craig, on that part, machine's going to run about, depends on which model you get, anywhere from one-seventy to two-thirty.
Now, when you said you looked at, you just looked at one in operations, is that what you're saying?
I'm going to go look at it, Jared, it's, it's in Washington County, they bought it two years ago, because they was having the same problem of getting striped and getting different things going, and, so they bought it, it's just a paint machine that puts out the glass bead, it's not the thermoplastic, that machine, I mean, you're talking about eight hundred thousand dollars if you got thermoplastic.
Pretty much, though, the thermo is for asphalt, and the paint is for the oven products that we put out.
That's, that's correct, we can do the paint on all alcohol and chip seal roads, uh, even on bike.
Is it okay to just put the white lines, like, on these smaller county roads? Is that, that's okay?
The one thing that I would hesitate to just say that categorically.
I don't mean on every one of them either, I'm talking about the major, major small county roads.
This, I'm going to defer to my engineers, if this may be the, I may be totally off base, but it occurs to me that if it's state aid, we probably need to confer and make sure that how we strike it complies with any regulation they feel like they got.
I think we can do a state aid. Yeah, but wait, you just said the paint is not what, but that's not what they require, is it?
Well, that's what he's saying, that we may have to use the other for the state aid.
Right.
I mean, we're, we won't totally get away from our contractors, I wouldn't want to, typically, if we overlay a state aid road or main through road, even though it's not state aid, I would get my thermal plastic.
Just normal maintenance, because the paint's not going to last that long.
That's what I'm saying, main thing is the maintenance, it's like Monterey right now, we got to do something there, and, but that's the big thing, but, but, yeah, we're still doing asphalt, so it's going to.
Most of my roads are not asphalt, I mean, there if you.
But I mean, some of them are still going to be asphalt.
Yeah, we're going to still need it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we still use it on asphalt roads, dude.
Okay, I thought you said you didn't, mostly on our other.
But typically, if I get a new overlay and the road is wide enough for detailing, I'm going to turn it over to my traffic people to do all that detailing, it takes different machines and different stuff to do, I mean, you spend the money, you spend the money on brand new asphalt, you need to put thermoplastic down.
Absolutely, yeah, compensating.
That's what we're talking about. But, but, because some of the roads, a couple of them, they weren't even wide enough for them to stripe, they can only get one down the center, they couldn't get anything on the side.
That's right, but I mean, if we, I might go back to what y'all was asking, Craig, typically, if the road is not wide enough, we don't put the edge on it, we try to center up with a yellow, one single yellow line in the middle of the road, and hope it, you know, I mean, it usually is enough room for.
When you, when you visit with Washington County, ask them how much money they spend a year on paint?
And do they, you know, we're going to have to put together, you're going to be able to do this in-house, as far as with the men you have, we've got to hire more crewmen.
We have to do it in-house, we're going to hire anybody else, we've got to reallocate and readjust.
That's why I just want to make sure, when I come back, say, we're not going to have two men.
Well, what I plan on doing is, is trying to work it in-house right now, Jared, now, not something we're going to be able to run every day, because weather's not going to let you run it every day, you know, it's going to be a seasonal.
How many men you take to run one?
Two.
Two? And is somebody driving flag?
That's, that's typically a driver, they said what they usually do is a driver in the truck, a guy in the back, and a pickup, with their flasher, you know, with their flasher.
Those are you two?
Yes.
Okay. Flasher man.
But it takes about fifty, fifty gallons to do a mile of road, just depends on how heavy your paint is, I mean, that's, that all reflects, it's just like laying asphalt, you know, whether you're inch thick or two inches or whatever, the paint, we was looking, we hadn't found it on state contract yet, it's Sherlin Williams sells most of the paint, that's where we buy it from, even what little traffic paint we do right now, with a manual bill, so, basically, what I'm trying to do is look at, whether you want to go a fifty-five gallon model, that totes fifty-five gallon drum, or one that totes a two-hundred-and-fifty gallon tote of paint, I want, that's what I'm trying to say, I just, because you don't want, you don't, you want to use what you do out there.
Yeah, you don't want to open it up.
And you got to clean that stuff.
That's right, and then you got to try to store paint, like this time of year, I would probably be thinking, you need to kind of come down on the striping end and be parking up for a year because of the weather and, and the coldness of, of the paint.
When are you heading to Washington County?
Probably next week sometime to look at all this.
When do you, what is your timeline here for us coming back, what is, since we've got to, if, if the board authorizes the purchase and the reverse bid, give me an idea.
I defer to my purchase.
Six months.
I'm not going to drill on time, Brian, Bob, I'll be honest, we, we'll, we'll look into that, what, I think one of the first steps in this process is to make sure we get the right specifications for the unit, so that we can develop the bid app, and so my, my thought process is, count on at least sixty days from the date that you authorize the bid to be published.
Because this, this is going to be a spec, I mean, it's going to be, I mean, I'm going to have to get a spec together, me and Craig going to have to sit down, because, you know, and the purchasing people say that's what you need to, you need to write a good spec.
Well, are there any other counties doing this, I know you found this one, but I'm just comparing equipment.
I mean, it's all, I got a dang list of them, but I mean, there's not a lot in Mississippi, I know they said, I know Washington said that Bolivar County's looking at bidding one out there, come looked at theirs the other day, different counties are starting to look at this.
Basically, Washington County's on one, and the state, that's.
In Mississippi, in Mississippi, it has this brand now, M.DOT, everybody else, you know, but it's just a brand, we looked up and.
What about cities, have we checked cities?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I mean, there's a few cities that, that have it, but I mean, they, they all got different kind of brands, we looked at one that actually went on the back of a pickup, not nearby as expensive, but my research says you can't hold a straight line with it, so, it's, it's too rigid, it mounts on the back of a pickup, the guy in the pickup makes a wobble, you got to wobble in the lane.
Steady hand, man, there, boy, I tell you.
You don't want Jay driving.
I'm not a good detail.
But anyway, they've been doing it for two years, and they, they really liked it, and that was their complaints, like us, about the striping fading out, so.
I think a big, what Bob said is the cost of paint, because that would be a, a big thing to me, if, if we're close on buying it and it paying for itself over two years, and then that paint, I mean, if they're running a hundred thousand dollars worth of paint through the year, it may, you know, it may not.
That's right, I mean, and I got to get, you know, I'm trying to figure out what's the best paint to use, Steve, they make a water base, they make, you know, all different kinds for it, I'm trying to talk to different people to see what.
Water base, sure, easy cleanup.
What's the best paint to use, what they've had best success out of out there, but I know just, our chip seal roads, what we did last year, over around thirty miles, you know, it would have paid for the rig, what we paid for contractor last year.
Just on the chip seal.
And the paint, how, well, that's something you check on, but I mean, how, you know, how's its shelf life, like, if we had fifty-five dollars?
The guy, Washington County told me it's just like, really basically a paint can, you open it up, you really need to kind of use it, as long as you keep it stored in the right conditions, you can shut it back up, and, and you're good, but, he said, they, they've got the rig that has a fifty-five gallon drum on it, they buy it in five gallon cans, they say it's about the same price as buying it in a fifty-five gallon drum, that way, they put in, like, the machine, what they going to go paint that day, and they use it up.
What kind of thing they use, shake it up?
He said they just use one of them, they got a cordless grill with the thing, and they start, stir it up, dump it in the fifty-five gallon drum, and he said that's what they figured was, worked the best for them.
Well, I would have thought you went through five gallons and a hundred yards.
Well, he said, he said it usually took about twenty-five to do a mile, Steve, although, so, I don't know, I don't know what, how he was looking at it on his pencil, what he, he may have been looking at convenience or, or what, I don't know, I would think a two-hundred-and-fifty gallon tote machine, they make one that takes a two-hundred-and-fifty gallon tote machine, I mean, what I figured, if you're going to go do any painting, you by going to use one of those totes up, you know, and that, and then you don't, I know I talked to M.DOT, they're going to the tote rig, just because of the cleanup, you got one tote, you set it on the back of the truck, when you use it up, you're done with it, so they kind of run into some DQ problems with the fifty-five gallon drum sitting around. You got to clean up, and got to dispose of them and everything else, tote, you reship back, and they reuse them, so.
But you got so much paint in, you got to go and use that paint up.
Yeah, sure, but I mean, you're talking about, I mean, paint a white line, I figured up, I mean, you're using about a hundred and twenty-five, thirty gallons in a mile, so a tote ain't but two-hundred-and-fifty gallons, so, I mean, you talk about a couple miles.
I thought you said twenty-five in a mile.
Twenty-five, five gallon.
Oh, oh, five, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, I don't know how thick they're painting, and he, you know, I mean, that's, it all regulates that way, I mean, so, I'd have to just get up there and look at it, see what they're doing, they may be putting it down where it's quarter inch thick, I don't, I don't know.
Any other questions for Mike on this?
That's.
We look forward to find out what you come up with.
Thanks, sir.
I have one other item for discussion, not for today, but for, I'd like to set for the next calendar or the one after, to discuss our, our transportation plan, how much money we've spent out of it, how much we have coming out of it.
Okay, of course, coming up, you talking about road bridge?
Yeah, because we need to have an understanding of where we are willing, how far we're willing to go down on our.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I know, I rode down Longley Road yesterday, there's no way we're getting four years out of that without having to do something to it, so.
You want to do it on the Monday, or you want to do it on the fifteenth?
We can do it on fifteenth.
I'd rather do it on fifteen, I can.
We got enough on Monday, maybe fifteenth, we can set it aside.
Ms. Oster, you got that? Anything you got for additional business?
One more thing, sorry, it's last.
You said one thing a while ago.
He didn't make it.
We, several weeks ago, I brought up the fact that West Rankin Parkway was having some issues, you know, it's been sitting there a year, contractor sued us over frivolous stuff, that is his own fault, part of it, it is our biggest part, it's his own fault, and yet, he's holding us up on court and not getting us able to get through with this, and I asked Craig at the time, I was like, is this something that we can keep them from coming back forward and doing business with us based off of this, and he said, yes, well, guess what, we have Andrew Chapin Bridge, it's coming out for bid, and guess who the low bidder is? The very company that is suing us and holding us up over this crap that they messed up, it's their fault one hundred percent, and they get, they're still going to get paid for it.
How many people visit the bridge?
Six.
I guess, was it four, four?
Five, four.
Oh, there was two on there that for some reason didn't submit, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Four bidders. Let me clarify just one thing, Jay's correct, practically speaking, but just to make, make it clear.
Yeah, I heard your thought, considering.
The contractor actually sued the West Rankin Parkway Commission, so Jay was referring to us, which practically speaking is accurate, in that the county is a member of the commission, but technically, that is West Rankin Parkway Commission, nonetheless, that lawsuit has tied up multiple construction projects, and has deeply impacted a number of municipalities, less so the county, but more so the municipalities.
But we have money in it, too.
It's been acrimonious, and.
Two and a half million dollars.
I know, what's that word?
It's been a problem, and there have been multiple conversations with the contractor about the negative impact and the effects, so it's not like they aren't aware that, that because they do a lot of public work, that this could resurface somewhere, the fact that they sued the very folks that gave them the contract, so.
Are we still in litigation?
Well, the commission.
We are.
I mean, not, we're, we're part of the commission, the commission is.
Yes, sir, that, that litigation is currently ongoing.
Is it ethical for us to go back into another agreement with them?
Sir.
Would it be ethical for us to go into another agreement?
Well, there, the projects are completely unrelated to one another, Steve.
But, but we are.
But the history that the county has as a member of the commission with that contractor is certainly appropriate for this board to consider, when thinking through the issue, do we want to enter into a, to a contract with this particular contractor, who has sued a commission of which we're a member, that is, that's fair game for you guys to consider, that history is fair game for you to analyze and to think through in the bid
Yesterday, I met with Bill Devaney, which is a major stockholder out there, Steve Davidson, which is a major stockholder, we talking about twelve thou, or twelve hundred acres ready to build out there, and Delaware Osmant, and let them know, we're ready to get the ground rolling, hit the ground running, we just got this holding us up, and brought him up to speed on the situation, we're meeting the sevens, but the problem is, contractor's willing to forego the first claim, basically knowing that he's going to get paid even though he shouldn't, because there's two different claims, there's one where the engineer screwed up, and they did a, a survey by off the computer, and Melinda McGrath told the mayor of Pearl now that they have never done an LBA project that's based off of a, of computer, they've always done boots on the ground, and so therefore, at the end of the project, there ended up being about a three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar discrepancy in tonnage that, that was owed, and in my mind, the engineer owes a hundred percent of that, you know, but, in order to help move the project forward, I'm willing to say, let Biden go, let's get us going, and we can deal with the rest later, but, the second part of it is, they're still wanting to do arbitration, and more arbitration can be up to two years, you know, and, so, I don't, I thought that the whole idea was we were going to go meet with Dick, and we were going to squash it all right now, let's move forward right now, we ready to move, and I'm not so sure if that's the case at the moment, but, I hope it is, and, and I'm willing to bite the bullet at the moment, and, and just to get the project going, because it is a necessity, but.
Bite the bullet, what, what?
He's talking about on.
I know that, I know, but I mean, what, what are we going to do?
Bite the bullet, pay the bill, because, see, what happened was, there was five million dollars that was set aside for the Pearl intermodal change, and that was never going to be done, so they pulled that. and that was never gonna be done. So they pulled that five million dollars out, put it over on the West Rankin to help pay for the the federal aspect of it.
Right.
Well, they're planning on using, hoping to use that federal dollars to help pay for some of this stuff Joe McGee's wanting, and there'll be a whitewash. And that way, everybody's happy except we are getting stuck, basically.
Why are we, why are we on a fair?
We're not.
We the county?
We're not paying it. I'm just saying, being part of the project.
Move move the project forward by ending the litigation. Understand this, there are other aspects of the project that need to be completed that cannot be completed because of pending litigation. And D O T has been consistent. Until that gets resolved, we're not moving forward on the other part of the project.
And I'm not, I'm not so sure if arbitration is not gonna be part of that litigation that they hold up on litigation.
Jay, I think you're you're intending to say mediation. Arbitration is totally off limits. Uh, political subdivisions cannot be a part of an arbitration process by operational law. So it's 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 a mediation process, which is a voluntary agreement. Hey, we're going to step out of court, and we're gonna go see a neutral third party and see if that neutral third party can help us get this resolved. That's mediation. That's a voluntary.
Sure said arbitra, arbitration.
Well, that's, somebody's misspeaking.
I hope it's mediation. I hope it's mediation.
The the state of Mississippi, uh, and political subdivisions are not going to be a part of an arbitration.
Okay, all right.
Well, look, it's the other project we're talking about is in my district.
Yes, sir.
And we have got to get these bridges.
Yes, sir.
Before we get to work on the road, and the road is getting to the point that it's not safe.
Yes.
How close is, how close is the second bid?
Hundred and fifty.
It's.
No. Ninety thousand, yeah. It was, they went, there was a big spread.
But that's close in in the cost of the.
I mean, there were.
It is. It's about eight percent.
Six, seven hundred thousand dollars between, right, seven, ten and.
And I can tell you, Gary in Fuglewood is hundred percent on board with doing the same thing.
I mean, if it, because I don't, if I'm following the law and everything is legal.
Okay.
I sure don't want to get hung up with something like that on Andrew Chapel.
Well, and then what if he, what if he sues, and then he kills the whole thing, hold it down to?
The practical reality is this, the the board has the prerogative to consider all of these factors that we've been talking about, including the history with the contractor, okay? You've got the ability to consider all of that. There may be other aspects of the bid that we can point to that are also helpful if the board's intention is to look at the second low instead. There's, there may be something beyond the history. Uh, and that's a discussion for a later day. But um, but I will say this, those are all judgment calls that fall into the purview of this board, but that doesn't leave the contractor, the apparent low bidder, doesn't leave them without rights. And they would, more than likely, they've already proven themselves to be pretty litigious. They're willing to sue.
Just hold it up?
You can probably expect to be sued.
I would.
For rejecting what is the apparent low, even with all of that mountain of evidence attached to it.
What his basis for, what we're basing it on.
Lawsuit that he filed, it merely has going out there and filing the paperwork. He's done nothing else other than that. He's had no other expense from his attorneys. Now, he comes to like somebody like us, he's gonna have to fork over the cash.
Yeah, but he.
Because they're gonna be charging.
But I mean, he can do that same thing. He can, couldn't he, Craig? Just file that?
Yes, sir.
And then drag that on?
Yes, sir.
I I don't, I mean, I see both sides.
As being the second, would he be able to hold up our project?
I don't believe so. Uh, Jay, you would be exposing yourself, obviously, to some 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 risk that 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 they would prove uh, an entitlement to the bid.
Yeah.
Uh, you would be exposing yourself to that. And of course, the outcome is money damages. It's not that he would quote, get the project. Project's gonna move forward.
Well, I don't even know if those bids have been proofed and.
It's in the process.
Yeah, I figured it was, but I hadn't heard. So we may be talking about something we don't, we don't even need to.
All right, okay. Hey, Bob, I don't have anything else.
Yes, sir. We got plenty of time, man. The world is your oyster, so let's just go for it, you know? Anything else for additional business? Ms. Oster, anything? Is there a meeting for executive session?
Maybe, maybe Monday.
Monday, all right. Anything else before we call for an adjournment?
I don't think so. Jay, you got anything else?
All right. Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morris to adjourn. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Hey, Bob. I think.
Your birthday?